Meeting is called to order at 7:06 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, let me go to where I need to be here. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of November 19th, 2019 be approved as submitted?
Sure.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the approval of minutes of November 5th, 2019 as submitted? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool? Special Education? Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, special reports.
We just have one special report, which is our Secondary School Action Plan, so I'll ask Mr. Buddington and Dr. Maloney to come on up. If you remember, not that long ago, our elementary school principals were here presenting their school action plans, and now it's time for the board and community to hear from our high school and middle school. So I'll turn it over to Leslie and Wynton.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and share with the board and the community our action plans for the year.
Well, that one did, so.
Do you want us to come up with a signal?
We do want to also appreciate, and I know our elementary colleagues echoed this as well, the consistency of the board goals really has helped us build consistent plans over the years and align as a K-12 system. One of the other pieces with the first goal, when we talk about development of the whole student, that's been very helpful in developing this year's plan was the development of the theory of action statement for social and emotional learning, which guides our work in putting the words into actions about how we support the whole student. So for Bay Trail for 2019-20, for this school year, the statement consistently and purposely provide students with a safe environment that adapts to our unique young adolescent needs, that comes right out of our school mission statement. And the action steps that are outlined in our plan that address that are reviewing connections with students at least two times a year. So in our team meetings, in our grade level meetings, and in our grade meetings on conference days, we're having specific conversations about what are the connections that we're making with students? And which students are we feeling connected with? And which students do we need to develop better relationships with in order to support, better support the students? That also encompasses professional development around mindfulness, resiliency, restorative practices, and cultural responsiveness that's taking place in our professional development days, as well as that's helped us prioritize those areas for expenditure for our budget for professional development, for teachers to attend conferences and training in those. With social emotional learning, our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Team, PBIS, worked over the summer to align the social emotional learning competencies to different departments. And the departments are directly instructing students on those areas four times a year. So some examples of that would be, science has the topic of advocating for self. And so the science teachers are working with students on, how do you advocate? How do you advocate for yourself and for your needs? Our Loote teachers have the topic of teletrusted adult. What does that look like? How do you do that? Who are your trusted adults? Math has the topic of seek others to problem solve and ask for help. So with those areas aligned, the staff had time over our days when we were back in August and September to work out, what do those lessons look like? Part of our December faculty meeting will be an opportunity for the departments to continue to work together to review those, what have they done, and plan for the next implementation of that. So we're incorporating that time for staff to do that work. With our collaborative approach to student achievement, the guaranteed viable curriculum, continuing that in looking also connected with standards-based, with social emotional learning, is our efforts around standards-based grading. And we have allocated time in our faculty meetings for staff to pursue with a goal of exploring the impact of zeros. How does a zero impact of students grade, especially when you start averaging multiple assignments together? Exploring topics of redos. How do we approach redos if the goal is learning? How are we using our grading practices to really reflect the accurate learning of the students? And also looking at the impact of homework? And how are we using homework? And how does homework tie into the grades? So the goal this year is to explore those topics. And we're, the first two faculty meetings for October and November, staff had a choice of which topic they want to choose. They'll choose a different topic for January and February, and the third topic for March and April. But if we're also going to give staff the opportunity in January, if they want to work on more implementation of the topic they explored, they can continue to do that. So this year, we want to build off of the work of having Rick Wormley in with our leadership team this summer and talking about standards-based grading. It's a mindset shift. It's before we really shift practice, we want to begin working on that mindset shift. And with our response to intervention and our supports for students, one of the things we're working through this year is we worked on expanding our continuum of special ed services, adding in more consultant teacher service in the continuum, and we're working with staff on, what does that look like now as appropriate for students? So how are we appropriately meeting the needs of students that may need more support in the classroom where the direct instruction, where the instruction is taking place versus in a resource room setting that's more of a pull-out system where we were? So working through that transition with staff so that we have a full continuum of And so these are our goals around the whole student and the academic achievement at Bay Trail.
And to echo some of what Mr. Buddington has said, we truly appreciate the opportunity to have consistent goals. As some of you are aware, Brandon Fox and I have had the pleasure of presenting the same presentation around our suicides that we presented at the New York State School Boards Association last year. We've presented that at a couple other conferences over the past year. And it's always surprising to me how many schools, because we talk about how much we appreciate the consistent goals from our board, and it's always surprising to me how many, for how many schools, that's not, that's a novel idea or a novel concept for them. So, thank you. I think it really, as Wynton shared, I think it really helps for, in terms of implementing and seeing something through, and that consistency piece, and also being able to work together as a team of six buildings. So at PHS, the development of the whole student, like the other buildings, we're working on those SEL strategies, the social emotional learning. For students, we continue, I know I've spoken about this a couple of times, around the grade level seminars and how we learned through the listening sessions a number of years ago, how it was important to not only our community but also to our students, that students have more time to build that relationship with their counselors. And Dr. Putnam and I, we each year, we go and we spend, we do a listening session again with the seniors, and we ask for the good, the bad, and the ugly about PHS, and the seniors are very open in terms of sharing with us. And we, what always catches the seniors is that we take the feedback very seriously, and we typically make changes. So we continue to tweak those grade level seminars. They really have provided us with not only the opportunity for the counselor to develop a closer relationship with the students, but also for us to deliver some of those SEL topics. For example, the ninth graders recently had a presentation on vaping from the American Lung Association, and we received great feedback from parents and from students. For staff in terms of the SEL, continuation from last year, all new PHS faculty and staff will attend the mental health first aid professional development. And again, that's something that we heard during the listening sessions with the faculty was around this idea that going to college, we didn't all have that, those tools in our toolbox to handle some of the mental health issues and crises that we are experiencing in our classrooms on a day-to-day basis. So the feedback from the staff has been very positive. Last year, we worked, our goal was to reach 100% of faculty attending. It's a six-hour training, and it's presented by Delphi. Actually, Katie DeSalvo, who is our prevention counselor here at PHS, is a trained trainer, and so she helps us deliver that training. And as part of the K-12 vision and professional development plan, all PHS faculty and staff will be attending the teaching tolerance professional development over the course of this school year as well. And then from a parent perspective, we continue to partner with our PTSA to deliver educational programming related to how to specifically support parents with some of these SEL strategies and supports. And most recently, on November 7th, PHS hosted a parent awareness event with multiple workshops on drugged driving, vaping from the parent's perspective, and Hidden in Plain Sight. I think Dr. Putnam has probably talked to you about this. Hidden in Plain Sight is a workshop that they actually come in, they set up a teenager's bedroom, they take a classroom and they completely flip it, and it looks just like a teenager's bedroom. And then they give parents five minutes, and you are to go in and see how many drug references and drug paraphernalia you can find in five minutes. And they have yet to have anyone score a perfect score. Dr. Putnam will tell you that he scored a perfect score, but I...
I follow your meaning.
It's a very eye-opening. We had, we've had them in before, and the feedback, they can only take a certain amount of parents at a time, so we continue to bring them back because parents have asked to continue that. And then the restorative practices, we, this is something that we at PHS have been dabbling in from an administrative perspective, and this year, our counselors are all being trained. And we've been using the restorative practices approach as an alternative to discipline. And it really, I've sat in on a number of the conferences with the students, and the idea of being able to teach students, teach young people how to restore a relationship and how to repair a relationship, it really is powerful, and we are seeing quite a bit of success from that. And in terms of our collaborative approach to student achievement, similar to Bay Trail, at PHS, we are taking a look at standards-based grading, and we're still learning and wrapping our heads around what standards-based grading looks like at the high school. We are very fortunate to have a number of teachers who have attended various professional development on standards-based grading. Some have just dived right in, and those teachers are giving the practices a try with students, leading collegial circles, helping their colleagues to understand the basics, and how standards-based grading truly supports the development of the whole student from that SEL perspective. But at PHS, we're still, we're still getting our toes wet. Baby steps.
So as we, the second goal focusing around partnerships, our focus really this year with Bay Trail is the partnerships around transitions. And this is a continued focus, and part of that is, as we know our students better, we have more information about our students that we want to make sure we're sharing as students transition eight, go nine to the high school, but also, we want to get more information from our elementary colleagues as students transition into Bay Trail. Additionally, as we've been going through training about, for a behavior intervention team, and as we're looking at, how are we supporting students in many areas, we want to make sure that we're communicating that as students transition both from us and ask the right questions to get the information we need as students transition to us. To build off of one of the things Dr. Maloney said with standards-based grading, we do have some high school colleagues that are talking to their middle school colleagues about standards-based grading, and actually, I know there's a couple conversations about trying to find time where they can get together and have that vertical conversation within their subject area about, this is how we're doing it, this is what we're seeing at the high school level. It would be great to help you guys move along and share some of that. So we appreciate that conversation. Partnerships outside of Penfield, we have a new partnership, both at Bay Trail and the high school, with the Villa of Hope, that's helping providing some of the mental health supports to students. And then our shared decision-making team at Bay Trail is really looking, one of the areas they're looking at is around communication. And we've worked out a communication survey that's going to be coming out to parents in the next week regarding, how well are we communicating to Bay Trail? What types of communication are parents interested in? And are there areas where there may be some gaps? So our shared decision-making team is looking at that to see how we can better continue our partnership with parents and be communicating and sharing the information that's going on at Bay Trail.
So goal number two around partnerships is probably my favorite goal. I could talk about partnerships all night if you'd like, but I won't. We continue to develop and implement those K-12 connection events. I think the graduation parade is probably one of the most successful K-12 events that we have developed over the past few years. This year, we shifted the homecoming carnival to an event that was outside, a family fun zone. We weren't sure what the response would be. The response was huge. If you saw Howard that night, he was sweating bullets because we ran out of parking, which is a good thing on homecoming. And it was just the, to have so many families participate in that homecoming evening, it was awesome. And to continue along that vein, both Marcy Ware and I are extremely excited. Our Mosaics Club, Marcy Ware reached out and asked, their SDM is working on looking at diversity and different ways to address diversity within the building. And so our Mosaics Club is going to be working with Indian Landing. Marcy is coming this week to have lunch with our students at the Mosaics Club and talk about what that's going to look like, if it's going to be mentoring students, possibly presenting to the staff. All I know is that the students are so excited, they are just busting at the seams. And that idea actually came from an activity last spring. Erica Stutz from Bay Trail had reached out and said, you know, we're working on this transition piece. Let's take a look at this group of students who are in the urban suburban program, and how can we support them as they transition to high school? And so we had the eighth grade students come over for lunch, and some of our upperclassmen sat down with them and explained that transition and gave some tips and tricks to surviving PHS through the lens of students who are in the urban suburban program. So we also have implemented a specific evening for special education parents and families, students who are coming to ninth grade. I love this evening because students, parents, as well as teachers who are in the various programs that we have at PHS, take time and share what their experiences have been like with families coming in to hopefully ease and answer some of those questions. And then within the community, our partnerships, we are very proud of our partnerships within the community, particularly those that help provide supports from an SEL perspective for families. The after-school bus to the YMCA would be one example. As you may recall, our YMCA provides a $10 month membership for students, and we have worked with our transportation department to offer a bus which leaves 2:21, and it is full every day with students who take advantage of that opportunity to go to the Y. So we are extremely, extremely grateful and appreciate that partnership. And as Wynton mentioned, we have a new licensed therapist from the Villa of Hope who will be working one day a week at PHS and one day at Bay Trail. Just so happens that the therapist is a Penfield alumni, and it's awesome to be able to make that connection right here at PHS for many families and students. And then I think the dashes or bullets that are underneath, they really exemplify how we appreciate the consistent board goals. I mean, we continue to have a building team that participates in the resiliency collaborative with the other, with other Monroe County schools and outside mental health collaboratives, and that's all based on the work of Ken Ginsburg. And we're almost at full implementation of sources of strength. The U of R, who advises us on that implementation, five years is full implementation, we're at year four, if you can believe it. And the U of R recently facilitated a training for new adult advisors. We partnered with the Pittsburgh schools. And then they also came and did a training for new peer leaders. And we have close to, we now have close to 100 students and 20 adult advisors. And the excitement from this group of students, it is contagious. Just so excited to be able to work together, come together, and to help each other. And then the Student Summit on Race, it has been such a springboard for so many initiatives at PHS, from the Mosaics Club to the Mosaics Course. And actually, this Friday, another group of students will be attending this fall's Student Summit on Race, and I'm so excited to see what ideas are generated from that. And then the last bullet there, the continued implementation of the Alternative Education Program, the G-Prep Program with Gananda High School that we collaborated to develop. We currently have 10th through 12th graders from PHS who are served through this program, and we continue to partner and to tweak and finesse that program as students progress through that program. So again, lots of great partnerships going on at PHS. I could go on and on, but we'll, we all have other things to do this evening. And then goal number three. Goal number three, you know, we continue, as Wynton mentioned, they're looking at communications. At PHS, we've been really looking at textbooks in terms of, how do we shift to electronic communications? How do we really take full advantage of the Microsoft 365 that we all have access to? And, you know, again, the ongoing review of the budget, the building budgets from the efficiency perspective. So again, speaking on behalf of Wynton and myself, we both truly appreciate the continuation of the consistent goals. I think that really helps us to maintain a very positive focus in terms of doing what's best for kids, so.
And I think it's also really helped the staff understand the direction in the work, and it's really enabled the development of our action plan to be a collaborative effort with staff, and our teacher leaders have input into the plans, and I'd want to thank the Bay Trail admin team for being here tonight as well and support. It is a process where we can have the same conversation because we're using the same focus for the work for a number of years, and it's really helped that become a truly collaborative process in developing these action plans.
Okay. Fourth members, any questions? Barb?
This microphone thinks that I'm tall, but I'm not. Okay, as the senior board member here, to hear you say how much you appreciate the consistency of the goals, and having been on the board that originally created these goals, and being a former educator as well, I'm, that just warms my heart that this board continues to vision with the kids in mind. And I see it on your faces, and I heard it in your words, and I just want to say thank you, because that, that's huge. That's huge. But I do have one question, if I may.
Yes.
That was just a little, you know. When you have your, your, it's only with the seniors that you have your...
Our listening sessions?
Your listening sessions.
Oh, seniors, seniors are one semester, juniors are the next semester.
Okay. But the incoming freshmen, is there anything, like, do you speak to them as to what, you know, like, is going to happen? Like, do you know, I know that you have the, welcome to, but do you know what I'm trying to say? Like, is there a seminar for them?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we actually shifted the seminars so that, and that's why I said seniors, because right now, freshmen and seniors have seminar in the fall. And the students, during the listening sessions, the first year said, the senior group said, it would be much more beneficial if you moved our seminar to the fall so that we could work on college applications and the college process with our counselors. And we went, oh, that makes sense, that's a great idea. So actually, in the fall now, it is freshmen and seniors, and then in the spring, it is sophomores and juniors. And the freshmen, Tracy Savine and I go in and do a whole seminar around getting to know PHS, particularly around homecoming, because homecoming is...
Early.
It's early, but it's also this whole week of weird, you know, you've never done it before, how do you, what do you need to do? And I think because of our seminars, the freshman class, they really showed some, they're, it got a little dicey there with some of the games during the pep rally, and I think it's because we gave them a heads up on what to expect. But it's, the seminars have really proven, one of the counselors, one of the ninth grade counselors said to me, never at this point, this was maybe the fourth week of school, she said, never at this point in the school year would I have known this many freshman students. You know, because they come up and say, hi, you know, hi, Mrs. Cannon, or hi, Mr. Miller, and I thought that was very telling.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Calvin?
Yes. Dr. Maloney, so this new approach, standards-based grading, more holistic, now, for people that are going to go to college, I assume they're not using that system in college. So is there a way that you prepare them for that transition where it will probably be all or none? I'm not sure if colleges are going that way or not, but where it really will be like the final exam and the test that matter?
Actually, some of our teachers that have been doing standards-based grading are those that are teaching dual credit courses because the grading actually aligns more closely to what their college peers are doing as opposed to in the past. So I, I think there's room for standards-based grading at all levels.
Any others? Lisa?
I have two questions.
Ask me.
Can I ask two questions?
You may.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Impressive as always. The six-hour training that you mentioned for mental health crisis, that started last year?
Mm-hmm.
And how, I'm wondering what you... And how, I'm wondering what you're seeing, I mean, given our mental health crisis among the state and the nation, do you guys feel like your teachers are more comfortable in identifying or referring students to counselors?
Yes. Like I mentioned, as we were experiencing some of the tragedies that we experienced, teachers would come forward and say, "I wasn't prepared for this. How do I, what do I say? How do I acknowledge? How do I..." And the, so teachers is, are one piece. The other piece that have had great feedback around the training are the clerical, because many of them feel like they're on the front line. The students are being sent, whether it be to the counseling office or to the grade-level administrators' office, and the first person to come in contact with them is a clerical person. And many of them have said, "Thank you so much for providing this training because it helps me to stay calm, know how to, know what an appropriate response is, know how to identify signs of whether students anxious or having a panic attack." Those types of skills that, I mean, I don't remember having a class about that in college, and many of our, many of our staff have acknowledged that as well.
And I think it ties in with both at Bay Trail and the high school, is we're working on getting to know our students better. Staff are more in tune to students when something may not, they may not be quite right, but it may be something that in the past might have been overlooked or passed off, because now the staff has a greater awareness of, "Oh, those are things I need to pay attention to."
Right.
Yeah, thank you. And Mike, this is somewhat related, but not quite. Did you warn her I was going to ask about this?
I think so.
Okay, good. I was hoping, I don't think I'm the only one, but you'd comment a little bit about the SRO experience at the high school, Deputy Thurston. As you probably know, the board's been looking and talking a little bit about SRO and what that might look like, and I was hoping that tonight you could comment. Thank you.
So second to partnerships is my excitement around the SRO. And actually, they tie together because it is an exceptional partnership. So having Deputy Thurston here, let me first start by saying how he was able to build relationships with the staff and the students was incredible. I'll give you an example. A student who is in, she has since graduated, so who was in the criminal justice program at Bosie's. She was moping around and kind of earring, and he said, "What's wrong?" And she said, "Well, I have a test in my criminal justice program, and I'm not going to do well." She was waiting for the bus. And he said, "Well, let's, let's study. Let's, let me ask you some questions. Let me..." And just that relationship and that rapport, and the student did so well on her test. She came back, she was glowing. And then, so by having that positive interaction, she shared that with her friends. Her friends then began to come around, and he just, he had this very positive, many students who had shared with an adult somewhere in the building that they were interested in law enforcement, we would connect with him. And that piece was, was awesome. We did have a situation here where a staff member actually had a gallbladder attack, and he was able to have the ambulance come much quicker than if we had gone through the typical process, simply because he was able to radio and to make that happen. He was able to, there are often situations that happen outside of school that involve law enforcement and maybe some of our students or some of our families, and he was able to provide us with that information and possibly intercept or prevent something from coming from the outside into, into PHS. It was each day that he was here, I would, and this is not a joke, Dr. Putnam will tell you, I would call and say, "Here's the reason today that we need an SRO." It was having, just having him here, being able to provide that level of support from a law enforcement perspective, help us in dealing with some day-to-day situations and some bigger situations. We had a situation that I'm not sure that it would have ended so positively had he not been here. Prior to him being here, I think we would have ended up calling 911, possibly needed to collaborate with the family around having the student taken to the hospital. But he was able to connect us with the Office of Mental Health and make a connection for the family to avoid that. So I, there aren't, there probably isn't enough time for me to go through all the positives. You know, we, I will say, we are very fortunate. We have a very positive relationship with the, with not only Deputy Thurston, but other deputies who are on the road at, during the day, who come in and help us with, you know, we had a situation yesterday that Howard called and said, "Hey, if you have a minute, can you swing by and let me run this by you and see what you think?" So just having that level of support, I can't say enough positives. We happen to be doing, he helped with our drills. We had our lockdown drill while he was here, and that was fabulous. Teachers would ask questions of him as well. He spoke in some of the classes. I can't think of a negative too well he was here, so.
And I just want to add to that, just from the Bay Trail perspective, even though he was at the high school. I think because of that relationship developing in Brandon Fox's new position, we've, that has opened some, the channels of communication where information was shared with us about things that were happening in a, in a family situation that we most likely would not have known about and probably would have been blindsided by a student's reaction. But because we had that information, we were able to be prepared to support the student. We didn't need to intervene right away with the student, but we were able to better monitor the student and be prepared to support the student should they need it. And that didn't happen prior to that experience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much for coming. And I really appreciate that emphasis on the partnerships and, because it really grows very exponentially, and we don't have that consciously in our, on our minds all the time about, it's the pebble in the pond, you know? You just don't really see how, how much that spreads out and has an effect. But when you bring it into, into your report and you share it with all of us, it's like, wow, yeah. I mean, it's a big deal, and it's really made some very positive changes in the district. So thank you for coming. We appreciate your reports and all the work you did to put that together and for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes special reports.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thanks, Wynton and Leslie. Nice job.
We are on to visitor's speaking time, and our visitor is Krista. And Krista, I don't need to go through our protocols. I know you know them. It's good to see you again.
Good to be seen.
I know.
For those of you that don't know, my name is Krista Connect, and I'm with Penfield Special Education PTA, and I'm here to formally invite you all to the Penfield Septa Book Fair, which is Saturday, December 7th. It's a full day of activities, and I think Dr. Maloney kind of mentioned a K through 12 events. This is a K through 12 event. We have a friendly competition between our elementary buildings and to see who might have the most participants. For each school, we've got music and somebody from the school coming to do, to read to their respective students. If you haven't experienced the book fair, and it's at Barnes &amp; Noble in Webster, when Indian Landing is there, and the Indian Landing Singers, it's, it's a sight to be seen, and the place is kind of jam-packed with, with beautiful kind of Christmas singing and the enthusiasm that Mr. Seaman has in directing them. We also added last year, and we brought it back again this year, a little friendly competition between the high school and Bay Trail, the Book Fair Barista Bowl Competition. So come and order your favorite drink and, and vote on which one you like the best, possibly the Bay Trail Chocolate Peppermint Delight or the Penfield High School Ginger Buddy Swirl. And both of the, both of the best buddy groups, best buddies at Bay Trail and best buddies at the high school are a part of this friendly competition and have put together their respective drinks. So feel free to come on down and order a drink and vote for the one that you think tastes the, tastes the most delicious. We also have Larissa Giuliano. She is an author coming. She was actually there last year as well. She's coming this year. She's got a new book out. We've got our, our pet teams will be there, and Dr. Putnam will be doing something. It's a secret to all, including him, as we have not quite yet decided what role he'll take this year. So it's an invitation to come on out. The proceeds go this year to sponsoring a teacher's scholarship, so, and I, we still need to kind of put the flyers out and the word out for that. But we've decided every other year, one year we purchase books, the next year we purchase something, so it'll be a grant for teachers to put towards something towards their classrooms and also to fund scholarships for the high school seniors.
Nice. Okay. Any questions or comments for Krista?
I think Dr. Putnam should be Santa.
Santa.
White powder.
I will point out, because he's not here, so I can pick him. I love this picture of Mr. Herschler, who just looks grumpy, but I know he's not.
Oh, no.
It's wonderful. So I love, because he does a really good job reading.
He does.
That looks like Grinch.
Charismatic.
Way to get off the Santa topic.
See how that works?
Pretty quick, wasn't it? How about Buddy the Elk?
Or the Krampus?
I've interviewed, I've interviewed dogs.
Yep.
I interviewed Susan B. Anthony.
Yes, you did. I was there.
I interviewed a couple of authors, a husband and wife, and I let them know I had just watched 60 Minutes, and so I had a hard-hitting interview for them, which was very, very difficult. Whatever you need me to do, I'm happy to be there. It's a great event. We'll bring the family out. We'll, we'll get that, we brought the baby last time, and every, I think everybody, we passed him around, so.
Oh, Lisa.
So, there you go.
I need to know what time.
There you go. I'll let you know.
Nine to nine.
All right, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Krista.
Thank you.
Okay. Levia, student representative report.
Good evening.
Hi.
To start off the report, Harris Hill, Channel 13's weatherman Scott Hesko visited third graders, talking about weather prediction, and he even let the students take a peek at his weather van. At Indian Landing, the first grader made, first graders made connections to their science unit when they visited the RMSC planetarium and learned hands-on about the galaxy. First and fourth graders at Cobble's, they're the classroom buddies, learned how to listen with attention during a second-step lesson. The gymnastics unit has started at Scribner. In gym class, students are on balance beam, climbing ropes, jumping, and so much more. At Bay Trail, students are using Minecraft education to build shelters and gather resources to stimulate survival in the Jamestown Colony. At PHS, the Penfield High School students, parents, teachers, and alumni attended a fun trivia night held by the robotics team. Penfield High School held its annual state send-off parade for members of the field hockey team, swimming team, and cross-country teams who participated in state competitions this last weekend. And Penfield High School will hold their fall play Born Yesterday this weekend, on Thursday through Saturday at 7:00 p.m. Tickets can be bought in advance for $8 online or $10 at the door. Thank you.
Thanks, Levia. Any questions or comments for Levia? Well, thanks, as always. You know, we appreciate you being here, keeping us up to date. Okay. Superintendent's reports.
Okay. So I just have, I actually just have two student-staff honors. And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sansucci, who's going to give us the enrollment report, as well as a second go-around for the Budget Goals Assumption and Guidelines document. So just last week, very exciting, was Athletes Signing Day, so congratulations to Penfield High School athletes who signed letters of intent to continue sports in college at the signing ceremony in the gym on November 13th. You can see this lovely picture, lots of them on social media as well. And then, I love this one just because I did this as a, as a child, and I don't hear about it as much anymore, but Jessie Nema's class at Indian Landing, her third-grade class, raised $468.92 while trick-or-treating for UNICEF. So great job. I know that was just such a huge thing where I grew up every Halloween, and to see it back there, I just thought it was really neat. So congratulations, a lot of money too, to a great international cause. I told you I'd be short. I'm really learning that Levia does a much better job at really telling everything that's happening through the district, so thank you so much. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci.
Tonight, a brief update on goals, just changes from where we were at the last meeting. A few, few new pieces of information have come to light, and so we'll update, re-review the Goals Assumptions and Guidelines document, and also tonight, spend a little bit of time on enrollment projections. So we talked a little bit about enrollment at the last meeting, but this is that more in-depth look at where we ended up. You have, all the board members have, a much more comprehensive document that kind of goes into how this works, a lot of detail on various student subgroups and so on, but really, sort of, it all can be summarized in just a few slides. So I'm going to go through those. The first thing we do when we be, when we have this analysis is we just take a look at where we ended up. How did we do last year? So if we're, our process has been, and always has been, to recreate our enrollment projections every year, to, to take a look at the new information that we have, revise our projection, look forward, and so that we always have the most current and sort of best data as we look into the next five years. So in 1819, our actual enrollment was about, well, it was 4,558 students. We had projected that we would grow. We expected we would grow by about 35 students to 4,593. We actually grew a little more than that, so 41 students, to just about 4,600 students. So that's a miss overall. We thought we would grow by 35, grew by 41, at 6 students. But I think what's more interesting than that is where the changes were, where the differences were. And I always say, you know, it's easy, it's relatively easier to predict the entire enrollment of the school district. And there'll be misses at every grade level, highs and lows and so on, and so you would hope that the, you know, that your, that your estimate overall would be fairly accurate. And we are. The further down the rabbit hole you go, the, you know, the more variances you find. So, you know, it's, our model's very good, has been very good at projecting overall enrollment. It's less good at predicting individual grade levels, and it's really bad at predicting individual grade levels at buildings, right? It just, and I can't tell you what your classroom is going to be at all. You know, it's just by the time you get down to those much smaller numbers, it gets more and more difficult. But overall, very good. What's interesting is the differences. So kindergarten was greater by 15 students than we had projected. Few less in, in grades one through three, and then the, the errors are the differences for what it's worth, at the middle school and high school just offset. So really, what we're seeing is a continued increase. We missed a little bit, grades one through five. We missed a little bit, grades one through five, but kindergarten continues to come in and we continue to grow at that level. So, and that's been true, if you would recall last year's enrollment projection and this same review a year ago tonight, I had the same conversation. We're missing a little bit at kindergarten. And I think you'll see as we move forward, as we talk a little bit about this, this process, this model depends on historical enrollments and then it projects them forward. So it takes information about live births in Monroe County, takes a historical average of how many of those show up in Penfield, five years after that date, takes a look at the previous year's classes and then how many showed up the following year. So it's a model built on ratios that look backwards. And that works perfectly, and in fact, very accurately for Penfield, until things change, right? If your, you know, if your enrollment is always declining as it looks backwards, it'll do fine. If your enrollment's always increasing as it looks backwards, it'll do fine. It's when it starts to change, when it make, begins to make that change, that you're going to see errors and, and increasing errors. And I think, I suspect that that's sort of the spot where we're in. The numbers aren't dramatic, we're able to manage them, but we know that our elementary incoming enrollments have been higher. So I think that's just what the model's showing there. I, I look, I always look back and see, well, five years ago, we project enrollments out five years. So five years ago, what did, where did we think we would be here? Again, we do it every year, so there's been lots of adjustments in between. But just out of curiosity and for some reassurance that the model works, how did, just, if we hadn't have ever updated our, our enrollment projections, if we'd have just done it once five years ago and hoped for the best, you know, how close would we be today? And you can see that we would be at, right now, we would be very good grades six through eight and nine through 12. We are 97 and 98% accurate, but we're less accurate at the elementary school. And, and again, I think that's what's, it's just the change. It's the elementary schools are beginning again to grow. I think that's turned a little bit. We've seen that in some of our incoming class sizes starting to bump back up. So we don't know if that'll continue to be true, but for the last couple of years, it has been. So, and, and really that's what this shows in a different way as well. So what do we project for next year? This year's actuals again, kindergarten's the hardest to predict. We predicted 338 students, it's projecting 351, which is about a three, I'm sorry, we had 351. There's a 4% increase actual to actual, we are projecting 339, which is a decrease. I spent some time after this was done, re-looking at some of our incoming or registrations for, of, of students who will be eligible for kindergarten next year. And I, and a couple of the schools look a little low to me. This is what the model projects, this is what the model projects. But I, my instinct tells me that we're going to be higher than that by a, by a number of students. And I suspect closer to what last year's enrollment was by the time we're all said and done. You can see what happens in the remaining grades, one through five, continues to increase and then fairly flat at the middle school and the high school, slightly down at the high school. Some of those incoming bigger classes had, just haven't gotten there yet. So overall, about a half percent increase in enrollment projected. Again, I think because of kindergarten, that's a little bit at the low end. We grew by 1% last year. So that's where we're at. We will plan on budgeting four, as we have in the past, four kindergarten classrooms at each of the buildings. We monitor that as we go along, you'll know at Harris Hill in the last few years, we've ended up with three because that's been the building that really hasn't participated in the, in the growth. But it's better to have that classroom budgeted than, than needed and not have it. So we monitor that as we go along, make the final adjustment in the July and August and, and pick a, pick a number of sections and go forward from there. We'll plan on doing that again in this budget cycle. Are there any questions?
So your model, I presume, consists of a spreadsheet?
Yes.
Where you put, you have inputs?
Correct.
And have you looked, just curious, why is it off? Do you see kind of what the input is that's giving you the error?
Yeah, it's just the, it's a function of the model, not so much the input, but the model looks at retention ratios from class to class on a historical basis. So if, for the past five years, just for argument's sake, first grade, well, here's a great example. Back before, when we had half-day kindergarten, the model would, would assume that from kindergarten to first grade, a kindergarten to first grade class would grow by 15% because parents chose a full-day kindergarten class somewhere else. They would put their kid in private school, they'd bring them back to us for the first grade. So that was a dramatic example of what it looks at. It looks at that in those days, kindergarten to first grade grows by 15%. It's been 15, 14, 16 over the last three years. Let's project that kind of growth forward. There's smaller changes amongst all the grade levels. You know, third grade usually grows just a little bit to fourth grade and so on. So it takes that historical information, calculates a ratio of the spreadsheet and then projects it forward. So if something changes and it's not 15% anymore and you're using 15% because that's the history, your model's going to be wrong, a little bit wrong. And it depends on why. And I think in our case, the why is, you know, the model's looking backwards at a history of slowly, slowly declining enrollments over the last several years. And as it starts to change, the model's still looking at a decline that doesn't happen anymore. So. It'll catch up, it'll catch up. In the meantime, we just need to be aware that that's happening, think about that and just plan around it. You know, you can try and chase it with a different model, but then you're never going to have anything. It's, you know, you'll be, now you're just making it up. So it's just, you know, stick with what you know works and adapt.
Right. Clark?
For the kindergarten, you just, yeah, no. For the kindergarten, last year, the model undercounted.
Yes.
Underpredicted. And this year, you're predicting decline again.
Yeah.
What, so if we look at what we're doing this year is 351 and we go down to 339 as prediction, projection, if we end up at 330, 351, what is our impact in terms of class size? Are we, are we prepared for that based on our, based on what we're going to go project on? Will we be able to handle that 351 and be prepared for that?
Yeah, I think so. I, when I looked at, we will be prepared. We can easily accommodate the 351 students. The outgoing classes create, should create enough space. So I think we'll be okay. Right now, the, you know, the one building that's seen the biggest declines is Harris Hill. The model's predicting that to continue, but there are more students registered, or I'm sorry, more students in the census right now than the model would predict. So that's why I think I need to go back and, you don't want to ignore it a little bit, but I think, you don't want to ignore it, I guess I should, not even a little bit, but I think we should think about that and reflect on it and plan a little bit around it being a little wrong. I think it should just be part of our consideration.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So that's, if I could, I'm sorry, that was, that's, that's enrollment. Goals, assumptions and guidelines, I resubmitted the document to you. There's a few sections that are highlighted in yellow. That's where changes were made, everything else is the same. I'm going to spend just a few minutes going through those so, so that I can talk about what changed and I think why it's important. Again, as, just as we always do in all of these budget presentations, just recall the three district goals. I'm not going to, I'm not going to spend time more than I, any more than I usually would because you've heard so much tonight about that already. On your agenda tonight's the, the approval of this. So this is where we're at in terms of, of process. We had a review of goals, assumptions and guidelines. Tonight, we look at enrollment projections, you adopt the goals. We'll look at a tax cap update and forecast. Think a little bit about reserves and some reserve planning at the next meeting and, and then we'll swing into some, the heart of the budget itself and begin with the administrative budget presentation in January. Just to remind everybody, the tax cap is one of our key budget assumptions. I don't know more about this than we did at the last meeting. That is the rate of inflation. I'm still estimating it at about 1.7%. We'll see how that turns out. But what we do know of the three numbers that, that are going to be important to us, the allowable levy growth based on the rate of inflation and then the tax base growth factor has just been released by the state education, by tax and finance, I guess it is. So this is the growth in Penfield of real bricks and mortar in the community. So it's the assessment growth in the community based on new construction, not on reassessments, you know, not your, the value of your home changed because of inflation or the equalization ratio, but new construction, new bricks and mortar, and we're at .82%. So this is where that's at in the county. You can see that Rush Henrietta, you know, there have been years when we led the league in this somewhat inexplicably, but, uh, I, cause I can't, I, you know, these aren't numbers I can swear to. This is a number we're provided that's based on the assessment system and we don't really have a way to check it, it just is what it is. It makes sense in this regard, Rush Henrietta has some significant new hospital construction in their community that's just come online and it's reflected here. But you can see that last year, we were right at the average for a county. This year, we're slightly above the, the average in terms of growth in the community. And you can see the other, the other times, it can't go less than one. So, you know, if your, if your community or your assessments are shrinking, the, the factor is one.
Doesn't match the previous number.
Doesn't? Oh, you're right. No, .8, no, it should.
Oh, I'm thinking of what, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, it's a decimal. Yeah, it's a percent, sorry. I should, yeah. No, it scared me for a second. So that leave, that's, so we're here. Last year, just to recall the factors, allowable growth at 2.77, tax-based growth ended up a maximum levy of just under 3, 2.99. We adopted just under that at 2.94. This year, 1.7, .08. We just don't know what that maximum levy component will be yet. So, but I am estimating, based on the point, the .8, that an estimated maximum allowable levy increase, if it comes in at one, at or around 1.7, should be about a 2.5% maximum allowable levy increase. The other piece of this puzzle has to do with revenue limitations at New York State. We talked about this last time, it was sort of brand-new information. And I, so I, at, at the meeting, I, I mentioned it, it wasn't written down, so we've included it as part of our assumptions. School aid is about, we're, we're one of many needs in the state budget. Schools are an important component of the school budget, oh, I'm sorry, of the state's budget. A large component of the state's budget, but obviously and certainly not the only thing. And, and the other largest component is Medicaid. So we're 27% of school, aid to schools, supportive schools, is 27% of the state's operating budget. Medicaid's 21%. And Medicaid is in deficit by approximately $4 billion. So this sort of came to light in the, as they moved into this year's financials. The, there is a, sort of a global Medicaid cap that the governor adopted as part of his financial reforms in his first term in office. Medicaid has been growing faster than that Medicaid global cap. And the Department of Health and Human Services in the last few years has been sort of managing that by rolling expenses at year-end, not into this year, but into the next year, sort of pushing the expense out of the year that it's generated and into the next year. And when you kick a can down the road like that, it's sort of snowballs. And so this year, as of this point in time, the estimate is that the Medicaid, that, that Medicaid budget's in deficit by about $4 billion. About 3 billion of it is due, 2.3 billion of it due to the current year and about 1.7 billion of rolled-over monies from previous years. It's, the, the Department of Budget has said, well, we're going to manage some of that or reduce that deficit during this year, but it's unclear how that's going to happen. I mean, it would require less services or cuts to, in reimbursements or just not sure how that can happen. So if it doesn't, the state will end the bu, the fiscal year and go into their budget facing about a $4 billion deficit when they thought, or at least the early project, their, their financials, their, their mid-year, or their first quarter update said they were in balance. And it's about 4% of the budget. So it's a significant problem. I mean, it's not the end of the world certainly, but it's a significant problem. So we'll see how it shapes up. I mean, it's not, certainly not good news for school aid because Medicaid's certainly a, you know, one of the things we compete with in terms of reimbursement. So I built that in. And then this, I somehow just missed, but in, in working through some of the Medicaid issues and trying to understand that and that global cap, I realized that, that, and we've quit talking about this, I even took this out of Goals, Assumptions and Guidelines a number of years ago. There is a statutory, at the same time that they adopted the Medicaid global cap in, in those fiscal reforms several, many years ago. They also adopted a statutory annual increase for state aid, for school aid. And it was based on, essentially the idea was, the governor said, school aid cannot increase by more than the prior year's growth in the, in the, in personal income. And I took it out, I haven't talked about it for a number of years because it's been so widely ignored. I mean, it can increase by more than that unless the governor and the legislature decide to override it. And they did, and they did, and they did, and I thought, well, this is stupid to talk about. And so I quit talking about it. But this year, they changed it and they changed it as part of the budget language. They changed it from being based on, where it in the past, it has been based on the prior year's rate of growth in personal income, which would have been about 6% for this year. It's now based on a 10-year average annual change. So as the economy's turned and as, and as personal incomes have started to come in, they've been growing, it's been going up. And so now it's to the advantage of the governor to stretch the period out 10 years to pick up some of those lower increases to bring that down. I bring it back, I put it in here because I don't think they would have done this unless they intended to do something with it, right? I, I don't, you know, I don't think they adopted it just for the sake of it. So it was adopted as part of last year's budget, it's a permanent part of law, there's no expiration date of it, so we'll have to wait and see how that turns out. The dynamic's still the same, if the governor and the leg, and if the Senate Assembly and the governor agree to override, it's overridden and the statutory cap doesn't have any meaning. But again, I'm not sure why they would have done it if that was their intention. They could have done that with the old cap. So we'll see. The other piece and, and other piece of financial news has to do with TRS rates. I didn't know them at the last meeting, they've been released. They were released in the last two weeks and they will increase by about 1% from 8.62% of salaries to somewhere between. They don't, at this point, they don't release the rate, they release a range of rates. And in another month or so, they'll have honed that down and they'll give us a guesstimated rate. That's then, you know, after that finalized. But they're incre, they're estimating that they'll But they're increase, they're estimating that they'll increase by about a percent, I think is what that says to me, a good solid percent, which doesn't sound like a lot. But don't forget, TRS is a big chunk of money in our budget, and an increase, you know, if it increases from two to four percent, that's only two percent increase, but it's a hundred percent increase in the amount of money that that calls for in a budget. So this increases by one percent. That's about eleven, twelve percent increase. So it's a significant increase. ERS rates remain the same. They remain flat, so that's a, a bit of relief there. And then I added, just in terms of program changes and as an assumption, just some language around the boards, the, where the boards is at with regard to a school resource officer. The language simply says that you're considering it, that you're thinking about it, and that I think more conversation will be had as we move along, but that we'll need to include any necessary funding in the adopted budget. Finally, final, not new, but just a reminder to everyone that, you know, we're going to be, as we put the budget together as we have in past years, we're going to be working on making sure that we, that we look out, that we, that we make decisions, decisions not in isolation, but on the effect that they're going to have over a long period of time, over five years and more, in terms of our financial future. And that, I think, is it. At the, I already spoke to this. At the next meeting, we'll look at an update on tax cap and then begin budget review. We'll look at the various components of the budget we'll need to adopt by April twenty-first in order for us to make our advertising deadlines, be ready to vote at the high school on May nineteenth between the hours of six and nine. So are there any questions? Is there, you have more stuff, but.
Lisa?
Just a clarification on, I don't know what's, the revenue limitation that you were talking about, the cap on state aid, is that for schools?
Yes.
Or is that across, oh, okay.
Schools, for schools, for school aid.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putt. All right. All right, I am on financial matters?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Capital project bid awards. We have a lengthy explanation on the agenda here. I'm going to condense in a little bit. On May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, the district's voters approved both the general fund budget and a separate capital project for elementary school additions. The twenty-two million, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand elementary additions project includes classroom additions at Cobles, Indian Landing, and Scribner, and alterations and renovations at the high school and Bay Trail, including replacement of the high school chiller. Additionally, the general fund budget includes a one million, twenty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-dollar transfer to the capital fund for various renovations, including HVAC, electrical, and PCB remediation at the high school and Bay Trail. The total project budget is estimate, is established at twenty-three million, six-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. The first phase of this project was replacement of high school air conditioning system. This project has been completed. The plans for the additions portion of the project were approved by the State Education Department on August ninth, twenty nineteen, and Tuesday, October eighth, twenty nineteen, at three o'clock PM. Bids were received for the project, for this project. The district enjoyed significant competition. There were thirty-five respondents to the five bid packages, and all of that is listed in the agenda. So I'm going to jump down and ask for a motion. May I have a motion and a second that the construction contracts be awarded as set forth above in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Excuse me, where are we here? Yeah, but I can't. It's just that, okay. Do we vote on it though? Well, okay, because I was looking for kind of a motion and a second, and it's not on there. Okay. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget goals, assumptions, and guidelines presented above and at the board meeting of November fifth, twenty nineteen?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Policies for second reading and approval. May I have a motion and a second that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, six.
Oh, I was, I was going to comment.
Oh, well, we already voted.
Okay.
All right, we'll just.
I'm sorry. I had my notes up because I took the minutes, and I was going to comment. No, and I took minutes, and then I.
Okay. Well, we'll have to do that next time.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I was supposed to do that.
That's all right. It's, it's situated, so we'll just move on.
Okay.
Okay, we had some meetings for MCSBA. And Mark, you were at legislative, right?
Yep, the legislative meeting, we were talking about, primarily about our upcoming trip to Albany.
The ninth, I believe.
December ninth.
December ninth. And that was just basically it. And then the board president's meeting, I was not able to attend, so I don't have anything to fill you in on that. But I do know that for this trip, we're all invited to go, and we're all encouraged to go. And if you plan on going, Sharon needs to know, and it's, what did you say?
By, by the fourth.
By December fourth. Okay, I know, Mark, do you plan on going? Yes, I'm going to go as well. Does anybody else know at this point if they plan on going?
I already heard from Doug and Kevin.
Okay. Not this yet?
No, it's Megan's thirtieth birthday.
Oh, my goodness.
How did that happen?
I know.
Yeah, right? Family is big.
Okay, these two know. Okay, Lisa, Bill, and Emily, just give that some thought and let Sharon know by December fourth.
December fourth.
It's December ninth, by December fourth.
But Lisa, I'm going to go this year. We're going to, we're going to, you should.
I want to get on that bus.
You can do it.
It's just a rocking good time.
I'm not a bus person.
Well, give it a thought.
It's like that events bus we should be.
Well. Did you hear that? Okay, let's move on. Okay. All right, that's the meetings. Tranche one, finish your business. Let me just see here. Our next policy committee meeting is Thursday, okay? And our next board meeting is December tenth. So there being no further business, may I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at eight twenty-five PM?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.